Okay, good evening, everybody. Welcome to our March 24th special edition of our board meeting here this evening. All members are present. We have just adjourned an executive session for the purpose of discussing strategy with respect to potential litigation with the Commonwealth of Massachusetts due to the MBTA zoning legislation, and also with respect to collective bargaining as it relates to New England Police Bellevan Association, patrolmen, and local 101 public safety dispatchers in accordance with Mass. General Law, Chapter 38, Section 21A, Subsection 3. Would you please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Well, thank you all for joining us. It's a very special night for our board to welcome such great champions here into the room and their families, and we're super excited to be honoring the Wilmington High School state championship cheerleading team. So at this time, we'd like to invite their coaches to come forward. So, coaches, before I put you on the spot with a couple tough questions, I want to just remind everybody at home, I know most of the town already knows this, but just in case you've been living under a rock, we are, with us tonight are not only the Middlesex League champs, the North Regional, first place in North Regionals over in Billerica recently, the state champions of Division III, and this past weekend, despite a zero deduction performance, which I watched and was outstanding, second in New England this Justice Pass Saturday. Fantastic. So we're super proud of you. I had a chance to watch the routine, believe it or not. I was very impressed. The two stunts I thought were flawless, the tumbling was flawless, there was a heel touch that made me, I felt like I pulled a muscle just watching. It was very, very impressive, but we're super proud of you. We have a longstanding tradition of inviting state champions to this meeting because where else would you rather be on a school night than here, than here in Room 9? But we want you to know that our whole town is proud of you. We're really super proud of the student athletes and the coaches. We want to congratulate you. In a moment, we'll recognize each one of your athletes, but, coaches, we just wanted to give you an opportunity to maybe brag about your team. Coach Kylie and Coach Shannon, by the way, up here.
I'm just proud of all of them. Some of the most, like, hardworking girls I've ever worked with. I'm just proud of everything they did this season. It's a huge accomplishment. We haven't won states since 2008, so, or 2007.
Wow.
So it is, this is huge. I have no other words.
Absolutely.
They definitely, we knew that they can do it from the start, but, I mean, they put it off. They're stars.
Mm-hmm. They're stars.
They are stars.
Absolutely. Absolutely. And Shannon, I know is a proud graduate as well, right? So welcome you back. In fact, we have a number of student athletes who are here for the second time. It was 2019, we had Audrey, Isabella, Gianna, Lily, Maya, Lily again. They were on the 2019 Papuaana team. I think we were in the auditorium. And whoever was chairman in that year made you, dragged you in that night and made you come to this meeting. So we got to get a hold of him anyways, but we're really, really proud of all of you. This is outstanding. I know your student, the students at the school must be pumped up. The teachers are proud of you. I talked to Mr. Ingram today on the phone. He regrets he can't be, he was out at AD conference, but he's really, really proud of you. And I know your administration, and I know you had a chance to meet with Dr. Brand, the whole school committee, everybody, the whole town. In fact, when you got back, I thought that there was like a bank robbery or something, but it was, but it was the police appropriately escorting the champions back to town. So we're super excited about that, and we know what great ambassadors you are for, for all the kids in our town. Some of you know that my, my three daughters are cheerleaders. They're at tumbling right now over at Wilkes. I'm not kidding, right? So they're over at Wilkes, and some of you volunteer your time to help out with the Papuaana, which says a lot about you, a real champion. It sounds like, you know, clearly we have some great future leaders in this group, maybe we'll see up here at this table one day, and I can tell you, come and tell you at the meeting what I think. But really, I mean, this is something that's going to be with you now for the rest of your life, and for some of you, it will propel you on to do other things, and I hope this will be that starting point of what will be even more future success. And some of you, there's no pressure, I know a lot of you are back, there's actually one senior here, we won't single them out, but we will. And I'm hoping that you guys will be back here and again in the future to celebrate another state championship, whether it's in another sport or in the sport of cheerleading. So we're really, really proud of you. We do have some citations, but I know my colleagues are eager to congratulate you, and Eric is going to show us, do you have like a routine that you can do?
I think I'll pull several things if I try that, yeah.
What's going on the evaluation? Mr. West?
Yes, I'd like to congratulate all the students that were the state champions. That makes our town proud, obviously the coaches, and in the back, the parents. I mean, a lot of times you forget about the parents that brought you to practice, took you home from practice, brought you to the various meets or whatever. So again, congratulations to everybody in the room. Much appreciated. Thank you.
Absolutely. Absolutely. Thank you. Ms. Maselli?
Yeah, same. Congratulations to each and every one of you. Very proud of you. I've watched as well, and I did panic on the way back when the police were escorting you as well. I was like, what is going on? But well deserved. And same thing, you know, great job to the coaches, to your parents. I'm sure many of you have been doing this for many, many years, and your parents have been taking you to early and late, and probably all over the northeast, if not further, for competitions and stuff. So great job. It's something you're always going to remember, and you know, hopefully, hopefully you'll be here again next year, but if it's not, we're going to be just as proud. So congratulations.
Thank you very much.
Now I know what Mr. Bendel was doing out back. He was doing that toe touch. And I couldn't figure it out for the life of me. But I want to echo my colleagues' comments and congratulate you for just an outstanding year. Champs, we are Wildcats again, huh? And see you all next year, right? You got a repeat?
Yeah. Back to back.
Good.
Thank you, Ms. Kyler. Mr. DePalma?
Congratulations. First off, I want to congratulate the parents, because you had to put up with everything all these years, listening to your, either your daughters or your sons saying, we're running late, we got to do this, we got to do that, but you did it. And because of it, look what you've produced. Fine, young women that will be able to bring Wilmington to higher, higher levels. Congratulations, ladies.
Thank you.
You deserve it. Smiles all over. You looked like a bunch of bobblehead dolls a minute ago when you were all going in unison. But I want to just congratulate you. Walk proud. And the one thing I would like to see is, I'd like to see the school give you a day off. Because you're, you're the stars. Congratulations.
Practice, more practice.
Thank you.
They're calling.
That's school following.
I want to talk to Mr. DePalma for giving you a day off.
And Mr. Slago, I know you're new here, but we have a rich tradition of cheerleading in this town. I consider myself a fellow member of the Smith Strong Army, actually, as these ladies are, and, you know, for years, and as I mentioned, the young ladies that joined us in 2019 that were part of a Papuaana championship team, now they've obviously continued that success at the high school level. Who knows? Daytona Beach Nationals for collegiate level could be next for some of you, and I look forward to watching you on ESPN 2. But Eric, no pressure, but this is, this is your people in the front of you that are going to be calling you, calling you up with the, you know, maybe, maybe a concern or two, and you're going to be able to say, you're the champion that I remember.
There you go. No, I think this is an incredible gift for all of you to remember what this feels like, you know, to be in a position where you're the only people in the state that can say you're the state champions. It's pretty, pretty amazing to have that, and, and like the board has said, this will be with you forever. You will never forget it. I know it's hard to believe, I was once a varsity athlete myself, and I, you know, long time, long, long time ago. And being able to compete at the highest level and succeed at the highest level is something that does carry with you. It carries with you to college, it carries with you to a job. You know that you can go out there and, and, and when you put your all into something, you can be successful. And so I'm really, I'm really proud and amazed that you guys have done this. So congratulations.
Absolutely. All right, so we have a little something. I know it's a school night, some of you have MCAS tomorrow.
Oh, that's right, yeah.
But, so we're going to get you out of here, but before we do that, we have a little something. We'd like to call you up, and if we could take a picture for the record, we want this to be in the annual report, which everybody, every household is going to get.
Colorful. Thick in the cupboard.
The calendar, next year's calendar.
I'll read this first, and then I'll present them out to everybody. But this is on behalf of the Town of Wilmington, all 24,000 people, we checked with every single person. The Town of Wilmington recognizes you for your exceptional performance as a member of the state championship Wilmington High School cheerleading team, a 2025 Division III state champion presented on this day, the 24th day of March 2025, signed by the chair, whoever that was, and the town manager on behalf of the select board and the Town of Wilmington. So we have this for each of you. So we'll call you up in no particular order. First up, please join me in congratulating Audrey. Just watch her step up there, step over, flip over, whatever. There you go. You just want to step over there, we're going to bring everybody up, okay? Do the picture. Next up, please join me in congratulating Emma. Next up, congratulations to Isabella. We got one senior we're saving that person for later. Isabella Cooper, I'm sorry. Congratulations to Gianna. Next up, congratulations to Sophia. Next up, we have Lily. Congratulations. Oh, sorry, Lily King. Next up, congratulations, Maya. Next up, congratulations, Olivia. How about Lily McLaughlin? Erin Murray, congratulations. Did we miss anybody? We have one senior on this team, imagine that. No pressure for all of you to repeat, come back again, but we're really proud of you. This is awesome. What a great way to cap off your senior year, and we're really proud of Bella. So Bella, come on up. Coaches, we haven't forgotten about you. We've got one for you too as well, for each of the coaches, we'll call you up individually. Coach Shannon Barrett, come on up. And then Coach Kylie, come on up on behalf of the town. I think they're at the front entrance of the school. All right, we'll move those chairs so we can get the full team back here, if that's okay. Parents, come on up if you want to take a picture.
I'm hoping that, like, to get in it. No. Oh, my God. And then pizza me in the walls.
Get all the room to walk. Make sure we get, where's the, oh, Eric, get over there, Eric.
I'll get it, I'll get it.
Get to the south. Kevin, this can go on your Insta-face. Put it.
There you go. What is that?
You know.
Come over here, Kevin, you come through the right here. We're going to be cut off, so that's a big deal.
The girls at, Gianna, stand up tall. The girls in back stand up tall.
We've never seen so many smiling faces.
All right, one more time, congratulations.
Thank you. Thank you so much. That was so nice. Congratulations, ladies.
Hi, thank you.
Did you have a trick chair you're trying to force on me? Huh?
I'll switch.
I'll survive. You'll see.
Yeah.
Shockingly, that's everybody. No.
Motion to adjourn?
Yeah. That was an important thing we did.
Okay, all right, you're right. That was good.
Yeah, that was good.
Lot of talent, a lot of talent.
My favorite things, for sure.
Lot of talent. I lost my, there it is. All right. You feeling good?
Yeah.
Appreciate, appreciate them coming in, that was awesome.
That was wonderful.
Yeah, and hopefully, you know, there'll be a state champion that comes out of the spring season, and maybe we'll get to see some more state champions in the future.
Yeah, we'd love having them.
Always makes for a good, a great appointment.
Yes.
All right, moving on, I think I missed some other business I want to circle back.
You got to the important stuff first.
Yeah, exactly. It's a school night.
Yes.
MCAS test tomorrow. Let's circle back, if I may, to transmitting of treasury warrants. We have 2536, 2536W, 2536T, 2537, 2537W, 2537T, 2537S, 2538, 2538W, 2538T, 25V, 13S, and 25M, 12S. And for a total of $9,570,648.81. Thank you. Is there a motion?
Motion to accept.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. All those in favor, it is unanimous. Thank you. We do not have any minutes to approve tonight. Cheerleaders was a success, I think. We'll move on to item number five. Mr. Manager, we have a number of communications.
So the first communication was a memorandum from the town manager regarding the status of the under project manager for the elementary school project. So for those who don't have the memo in front of them, this is just a, a memo regarding the town's options currently in the, in the module four, which we are in, which is schematic design with regards to our OPM. Our OPM is currently under contract through the end of schematic design. Our next module, at the end of schematic design, will be module five, which is the funding module.
Okay. Thank you. Questions? All right. I'll take the next one, if that's okay. Mr. Manager, tonight, I am very pleased on behalf of the board to sign a letter of commendation to Ms. Nancy Elliott, and I'll read it here and to the record, if I could. On behalf of the citizens of the Town of Wilmington, the Select Board wishes to commend you for a distinguished service you have performed for the past 42 years. First, yes, amazing, as first as a dispatcher clerk for the Wilmington Fire Department, and for the past 33 years as a senior clerk for the Town of Wilmington Public Buildings Department. We recognize you for your faithful and devoted service to your profession and to the departments in which you served. Your many years of service to the town and its citizens of Wilmington are most appreciated, and sincere wishes are extended to you for a happy and fulfilling, and I would add, healthy retirement. So congratulations to Mrs. Elliott, 42 years of service, and I'm very pleased to sign this on behalf of our board to commend her. Incredible.
That's amazing. I've only got 41 years and three months. I'm a hatcher.
There you go. You can do it.
That's a great career. We're really grateful for her service and we wish her well.
It's wonderful. Congratulations.
Long and healthy retirement.
Absolutely.
Thank you. So we'll get that to her. Okay, this is the official one.
That's the official one.
That's the rough draft.
Yeah. Keep this one in backup, just in case you screw it up.
Thank you, yeah, I try not to. All right, thank you. Got the next one?
So the next one is a letter from Catherine Racer, the under secretary, the under secretary at the Executive Office of Housing and Little Communities regarding the determination of project eligibility under the LIP program for the 100 through 104 West Street. As members of the board will remember, in 2024, so last year, this 40B came in front of us to change their funding source, which required a change in the type of application that they had. It was approved, the chair signed the LIP, and this is just notification that EOHLC has approved that LIP. So that authorizes them to start pulling their building permits.
Questions there? Thank you.
The next communication, Mr. Chair, is to the Select Board and you, Mr. Chair, from Lucy Maglia, Director of Department of Veteran Services, regarding a request to conduct annual Memorial Day parade and an invitation to the Select Board to participate. The date of that parade this year is Monday, May 26, 2025. It will start promptly at 10 o'clock from the Market Basing parking lot, and will proceed down Main Street and down Middlesex Ave, ending at the Town Common, where the ceremony will start at 11:00, the Veterans Lot, Wildwood Cemetery.
Always well done by the department.
Always.
Thank you.
Next is, apologize, it's a letter from Lillian M. Drain, the MTC, Massachusetts Town Clerks Association Certification Administrator. This is to let everyone know, and I'm really proud to let everyone know, that Beth Lawrenceon, who is our town clerk, is now a certified Massachusetts municipal clerk. So she achieved her certification, and so congratulations to Beth. I just wanted that to be written to the record because it's a really, it's a lot of work, and I'm really proud that she did that.
Absolutely. Congratulations, Mrs. Lawrenceon, that's terrific.
Yep, absolutely.
All right. So I believe that's the final memo, and we'll, thank you. We'll move to item number six, which is our first board to consider a request from Keith Black that the Select Board proclaim the week of March 23rd to April 30th, 2025 as motorcycle safety awareness period.
Yes. So Keith Black came in and met with me in my office, and we had a brief discussion, but an important discussion about this request that, that we, as a, as a town, recognize this important week to, for folks to think about motorcycle riders and encourage safety, not just for folks who ride motorcycles, but also for folks who are on the road with motorcycle riders, be aware that they're there. And so I actually believe Mr. Black is here as well.
Sir, thank you for being here. Is there anything you would like to add? Please come forward. We appreciate you bringing this to our attention.
Thank you. Yes, if I could, I'm not sure if any of you received the proclamation that was issued from the governor kicking off, starting yesterday, March 23rd, for the motorcycle awareness safety period, which will run through the end of April, till April 30th of this year. The governor signed it, Kimberly Driscoll, the lieutenant governor, and also William Galvin signed off on this for us. We did have our kickoff fundraiser yesterday up in Ipswich. Just a couple of things, if I could bring up, and thank you for acknowledging the documentation that I gave you. Last year, we saw 70 motorcyclists killed in Massachusetts, one passenger. 72 many, regardless of whether it's a motorcycle, whatever, auto vehicle, bicyclist, whatever. We're just asking if we can be recognized more so. A couple of the proclamations that I showed you from other cities and towns around, Amesbury is doing their proclamation tonight, Marblehead has done it for the first time this year, the city of Dedham has done it this year for their first time also. So this isn't something that we take lightly. I've lived in this town for 14 years now. I've been an avid motorcyclist for a very long time. I teach people how to ride motorcycles, there's a rider education, through the rider education program here in the state, 31 years that I've been doing it. So I'm committed to this. This isn't a one-time, one-and-done type of thing for me. Another statistic, I'm not sure if anybody on the board realizes, you have 629 motorcycles registered in the, in the town, okay? So we've got a pretty healthy community here, and they, we all appreciate any type of recognition from a safety standpoint is what we're looking at. And that's all it is. It's a safety standpoint that we're looking to be acknowledged, to be recognized through. You know, and again, I offered, when you and I spoke, Mr. Slago, when you and I spoke, was, you know, if you wanted to do anything as far as social media goes, I'd be more than happy to bring a few motorcycles down, we can, you know, take some pictures, you know, just to put it out there that Wilmington has recognized this. It goes a long way when we're traveling. So that's pretty much my request and my commitment to this. You know, if you folks have any questions for me, I'd be more than happy to answer any of the questions that I can.
Great. We really appreciate you bringing this to our attention and partner with you.
Well, no, I, thank you, and thank you for giving me the time to, to bring this up, and thank you for your time that you spent with me. And the assistant, I know she's been out with a medical issue.
She's fine, thank you.
She's back there.
How are you? Hiding in the corner.
She hides, yeah.
So again, it doesn't go unnoticed within the motorcycle community, and again, for us, it's a safety issue is what the bottom line that it comes down to. We're not asking for money, we're not asking for a fundraiser or anything like that, just, you know, can we recognize that? And, you know, if it starts with, within each town, you know, as it snowballs along, hopefully we'll be, be more survivors and we won't have these type of statistics.
Absolutely.
Is what we're looking at.
Very worthy initiative. Without further ado, anybody want to offer a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Thank you. And is there a second?
A second.
Thank you. Is there a discussion?
Discussion, please. Thank you for bringing this. I was reading this, excuse me, this, this afternoon, and I was surprised, I mean, obviously the statistics of the accidents is, I agree with you, it's, you know, 72 many and all the crashes and stuff, but I was surprised to see 629 in Wilmington alone. I mean, I agree with you, I think that's, that's quite a good amount of.
I own three of them.
I thought you were going to say, I thought you were going to say you own 600 of them, but no.
And my girlfriend, so that's four in our home.
No, no, but still, that's, that is a healthy number, and, you know, it's great. I personally have always, I've always had friends that have motorcycles and continue to do, not so much in this town, but in other towns, but always a big supporter. So I'm totally in favor of this, I think it's great. I do have one question for you, and forgive me if it sounds ignorant, but what causes most motorcycle accidents? Because I know, that's the thing, is to, you know, be aware, there are motorcycles. What is the number one?
If you look at the statistics that the registry puts out there, and any one of us can, anybody, me as the general public, can go online through the registry and request different, different statistics. The two that run pretty much neck and neck, one is operator failure, failed to negotiate the turn, okay? The other one that is continuing to creep up is the right-of-way violation.
That's what I was wondering.
We're stopped, we have the right-of-way to go through an intersection, the car We're stopped, we have the right-of-way to go through an intersection, the car coming at us wants to make that left turn.
Yeah.
And turns in front of us and takes us out. Those are the two main problems. It's not a matter of alcohol, it's not a matter of drugs or anything like that. It's, one, it's our fault as the motorcyclists, two, is the right-of-way violation.
Yeah.
The left turn, the vehicle turning left in front of us is the other one.
That is what I had heard, that a high, you know, one of the top things is, you know, with a car, because, you know, they're not doing the right thing.
We actually asked for legislation years ago to make that change for the right-of-way violation, to make that more stringent against the offending vehicle.
Right, right.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's terrible. But, well, thank you, I think this is great, and I appreciate you coming to us.
Thank you. Great, that's not an ignorant question, that's a great question, because a lot of people don't realize that.
Right.
You know, and if you don't ask, you don't know.
True.
And I'll make an offer to you, if you decide that you want to learn how to ride a motorcycle, I know a guy.
Don't. My father told me never to get on a motorcycle when I was a teenager, and, yeah, so I'm glad he's still around, but we might have to wait some more years for that.
I won't tell.
You won't tell him, okay, as long as you don't tell him.
Excellent question.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Yeah, Mr. Black, I'd like to, again, you know, on behalf of the board, I'd like to thank you for bringing this forward. I'm not a motorcyclist, but I do have friends of mine that have, and family members that ride bikes, and most of them can talk about the accident.
Right.
And probably ninety percent of the people, my friends that have the accident to talk about, it was not the motorcyclist's fault, it was a driver, it was a car driver's fault, you know, somebody, like you said, you know, going through an intersection or something like that, or we've had people that the motorcycle goes off to the right and the car takes the right. So, you know, we, it's, you know, I think it's a great idea that you're bringing forward, just, like you said, you know, check twice, save a life. It's great, we'll get into that nicer weather and...
Yep.
It's that time of the year.
Yep.
So again, thank you, sir.
No, thank you, appreciate it, and I appreciate the time here in front of the board for this. Thank you very much for taking the time with me.
Mr. De Palma?
Thank you for coming for us. I am an old-time rider. I haven't ridden in a number of years now, but I've, I rode since I was twelve years old, whether it was dirt bikes, I've had Hondas, Hollies, Kawasaki's. My father rode, he rode Indian, an Indian, and, and I loved riding, but I didn't like the idiots that were on the roadway. And most of it was changing lanes, don't even look, don't, they don't see you, just everyone, please, be conscious of your surroundings. The bikes are out here, and it's, it's, you know, everyone used to see you riding a group of bikes, you're gang members, you know, you're this, you're that, it's not true. It's, I rode, I rode, like I said, for years with, we had everything, we had every type of bike imaginable, just for enjoyment.
That's right.
And for people not to observe something that's simple, could never, I can never, never figure it out, and then they always blame the rider. Of course, it's always the rider, the, oh, the bike, you know, he should have moved out of my way, and it doesn't work that way. I'm just asking everyone in listening, viewing audience, bikes are out there, be conscious of it, that's all.
That's all we're asking, thank you.
And as soon, as soon as you're, the accidents will drop. There's always going to be accidents, whether it's the bike's fault or the vehicle's fault, makes no difference really, it, it's an accident, and let's just get it reduced, and let people ride with pride.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Further discussion?
Mr. Black, thank you for making us aware of this, and I hope that it continues to go from every community across Massachusetts.
Thank you. We're trying, yeah, yeah, we're trying, thank you, appreciate it.
Well, I think we're pleased to join you in this effort. So if there's not any further discussion, we'll call for the vote? Further discussion?
No.
Okay. Call for the vote, all those in favor? It is unanimous, and we will sign that proclamation this evening, and we'll talk to our staff about seeing what we could do about getting the word out, and, once again, really appreciate it, even if we could join, you know, partnering with you saves one life, it would all be worth it.
I appreciate that, thank you very much, and again, not to sound repetitive, but, you know, if you want a couple of motorcycles to come down and, you know, do a photo op, and if you want any of the big yellow signs that say, "Check twice, save a life," I know a guy.
All right.
I know a guy who knows a guy who knows a guy.
We appreciate that guy, for sure.
But, no, I appreciate your time, thank you so much.
Thank you, I appreciate you being here. All right, have a great night.
Thank you, sir.
And for the record, it's, Mr. Black is of Alderman Road, correct?
Correct, yes.
Correct, okay, thank you, all right.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next up is Board to Consider, item number seven, which is a request from Principal Brian Kira of the Wilmington Middle School to use the Town Common and gazebo on Thursday, June twelfth, from six PM to eight PM for the annual eighth grade moving on ceremony. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Thank you.
And motion's been made and seconded, is there any discussion? Mr. Slagel?
I just want to take this moment, because I don't think that we've recognized it, to congratulate Brian Kira on his new position.
Yes.
He was the acting principal for a while, now it's official that he's the, he's the man, and so, well deserved, I just wanted to say that out loud.
Absolutely.
Absolutely.
He's been the man for a while. He's a really, really good English teacher and basketball coach, and a really good administrator, and a great role model for our young kids, so.
Good three-point shooter, too.
Yeah, yeah. I understand he drained a few on you recently.
Yes, yeah, he did.
Excellent, well, okay, so the motion's been made and seconded, is there any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll call for the vote, all those in favor? It is unanimous. Item number eight is a Board to Consider Request for Ice Cream to Obtain a Hawk and Pedal License to Sell Ice Cream, Ads Ice Cream. Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Second, we have recommendations, Mr. Slagel?
We do. Upon review, the Wilmington Police Department recommends approval of the two thousand twenty-five application for Hawk and Pedal license for Ads Ice Cream. The Health Department has no issues with the approval of the Hawk and Pedal license for Ads Ice Cream.
Thank you. Any further discussion, questions? Hearing none, we'll call for the vote, all those in favor? Just want to make note, that's two meetings in a row, we're approving ice cream options for folks, I think, seeing a trend here. That's great. Finally, Board to Consider, item number nine, is a Board to Consider Filing an Exemption for the MBTA Zoning on the grounds that it constitutes an unfunded mandate.
So I have the language of the motion the Town Council provided?
Yep, and for the record, we just, as I mentioned, we just earlier this evening adjourned an executive session with legal counsel in regards to this issue, and so if anybody feels inclined, the motion would be...
A motion to have the Town Manager's Office work with Town Council to assemble and prepare for an MBA zoning case and report back.
Motion's approved.
Second.
Motion's been made by Mr. West, seconded by Mr. De Palma, is there any discussion? I would just add that, as we mentioned at the last meeting, I think this is a part of our effort to keep all of our options open, and as things come up, and as you can see, this is a very fluid situation, that tends to be, seems to be changing quite a bit, there are deadlines that keep popping up on the calendar, I think the next might even be April second, that the, the state might be taking up more this issue, and so again, I think this is an effort for whether, however you feel about the issue, and I know that we have residents that feel passionately both ways about this, that I can assure you that this board is keeping all options open, so that folks can make an informed decision come town meeting and special town meeting on May third. Okay. Call for the vote, we have a motion second, did you have further discussion?
No, no.
Okay, all those in favor? It is unanimous, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, before we go on to public comments, I was just, the letter that Lou wrote in respect to the Memorial Day Parade?
Yep.
He says, "We're requesting permission to have," has that already been granted? Just want to make sure that we're, you know...
It's a good question, I'll, not yet? Okay, well?
You need to take a vote.
Thank you, okay.
Votes may be taken under the communications section, so that we'll not be out of order.
I appreciate that, yeah, and I agree, thank you, Mr. West, for bringing that to our attention.
Make a, make a motion to approve the Memorial Day Parade and Veterans Services afterwards.
Appreciate you saving the day. Seconded by Mr. De Palma. All those in favor? It is unanimous, thank you for catching that. Okay, so that cleans that up, and we are on to public comment. Would anyone like to be heard? Please come forward. Sir, good evening.
Good evening. Rob Fasulo, twenty-eight Marjory Road. I've been pretty critical of the board, pretty publicly, but I do believe calling out somebody for doing well should be called out, so with that, I'd like to say thank you to Frank and Lil. I commend you guys for coming out strongly against three A. I know it's not easy for a politician to do that, so for that, I thank you, and that's a trait that is, is worthy of praise. You guys took the wind out of my sails by sending it forward, however, we're getting really close to town meeting, and if this gets approved at town meeting, our ability to file this exemption then goes away. So I would ask that you guys who set the agendas for these meetings, suspend the vote, we have until July fifteenth to vote this in, if you guys want to take it to that, let's push it off and let this lawsuit or this request move through the proper channels before we lose the ability to do that. You can verify with the attorney that what I'm saying is accurate, I did speak to the Marblehead ma, Marblehead attorney, and he's the one that confirmed if town meeting votes this in, we lose this ability. So whether it is in the process, or if it's been filed, if it's not decided and it's got voted in, we lose the ability. In November, the town spoke clearly, we don't want this. There's hidden costs that are not being discussed. I stood up at that meeting and I said that this might be the best that we can have, and I still lean on that. However, let's talk about the unfunded costs. Our infrastructure cannot handle this, we have water problems here, as alluded to by Frank, but what about the stuff that we're not talking about, the inter-basin transfer costs, more water out of the N W, MWRA, that's going to cost a town a fortune. Residents are struggling with taxes as it is, we have the seven, nine hundred dollars for the school. Now let's talk about the water bills and sewer bills, when we're bringing all this extra, all this extra money requirement for these projects. We have to fight it, and as a taxpayer, I'll tell you, I would rather see my tax dollars going to the attorneys to fight the state and say no than for us to just give in. Wilmington sent people to the Revolutionary War, let's, let's lead the fight here, too. Thank you.
Thank you. I appreciate your comments, sir, and if I could just, I'll just comment that, you know, as I said, we are keeping all options open, that includes, actually, I should just go back a little bit, it was the Friday before our very last meeting that we, you know, became aware of this idea of an exemption. Had we had all the information at the time, we probably would have taken it up at our last meeting, but as we mentioned at the end of last meeting, we were committed to finding out more information, and as you can see, we took the vote tonight. And you're right, it has not been an easy issue to take on as an elected official, but as you'll recall, all five members have been, spoke out against this for the last more than two years now, all five members voted against it at town meeting, and, but one of the things we have to be mindful of is that we do represent some folks that are favor this, so we're just trying to leave it up to our residents, albeit it means another town meeting vote, we're trying to play by the rules as they come in, the rules have been, the cards we've been dealt, as you could say, so, you know, I would imagine that all of my colleagues have, have been pretty courageous in putting their neck out there and how they feel, and I know that's not easy to do for anybody, but, so I appreciate your comments, and certainly we'll take them under advisement. Ma'am, please.
Thank you, Suzanne Sullivan, sixty Lawman Street.
Good evening.
I'm just gonna put in my two cents' worth on this issue about the exemption, and hopefully the town will go for it. Of course, my spin is going to be mostly on the protection of our water resources, and just to give people, just a really quick, you know, snapshot of how I see this issue, and I've always seen this issue, is that sewers are great for a lot of things, they're great for development, economic development, much denser development, and they can make people money, but on the, on the flip side, it's not always good for the environment in some ways. Eighty percent of the water that's pumped out of the Ipswich Basin leaves the Ipswich Basin. It goes through sewer lines into Deer Island, Wilmington included. It's basically de-watering your water supply, de-watering the Ipswich Basin. It is one of the reasons why the Ipswich River is one of the most threatened rivers in the country and deemed the most stressed river in the Commonwealth, and those are facts. We contribute to that in this town, we're the headwaters of the Ipswich River, this is where the river starts, we pump our brooks dry on a yearly basis. Lubbers Brook goes through drought-like conditions every single year. I sat on the Comprehensive Water Resource Management Plan Committee back whenever the heck that was, twenty years ago, to come up with a plan for this town, so that we could look at our sewer, our wastewater, and our stormwater as water resources. In that plan, the town of Wilmington was allotted a certain amount of water that they could discharge through sewer lines before they had to stop buying MWRA water, two to one. We've already triggered that, and we don't even have North Wilmington online yet. So through this mandate that the state has done, which has really ticked me off, because we spent a lot of water on that plan, a lot of time, a lot of people spent a lot of time on it, money, the town voted five hundred thousand dollars to develop that plan, and we're given another five hundred thousand dollars from the state, if, that's my recollection, if the numbers are wrong, but it was a lot of money at the time. And here we are at this stage of the game, and the state's telling us we have to break that plan, we have to go against that plan. So the ratepayers of this town and the taxpayers of this town are going to have to come up with a way to, to purchase two to one. So for every two gallons that leaves the basin, we're going to have to buy, I mean, for every gallon that leaves the basin, we're going to have to buy two gallons of water. That's what the plan says, and there is an act, it's called the Inter-Basin Transfer Act, and right now, we're actually in non-compliance of that act, because we're pumping more than what we said we were going to out through the sewer lines. So if we build this fifteen hundred units, we're going to be really behind the eight ball. So I just wanted to give a quick overview for everybody at home or anybody here that may not understand the issue, I tried to make it as simple as possible, because it is a little bit more complicated than that, but basically, that's what it is. So I hope that you will do your due diligence and do what you should do to protect our water resources and to protect the Ipswich Basin. The town's been kicking and screaming on this issue for a long time, and it's time, time for the town to do the right thing. DEP has now required, you know, conservation restrictions on the registered amounts of water that's pumped out of the Ipswich Basin, which would never happen before. We take a step forward, we're now, we're taking two steps back. So I urge you to please do the right thing and really challenge the state on this, they don't have the right to do this, we have the right locally, we know what's better, we've spent a lot of money, they don't have the right to come in and tell us we have to do these things. That's my two cents' worth, thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Anyone else like to be heard? Good evening.
Hi, good evening. Jennifer Hunt, Wilburn Street. I'm here on behalf of the Arts Council. I'm not exactly sure if this is the right spot, so I want to thank you for hearing me and at least pointing me in the right direction.
Sure.
I know that there's a lot going on with the buildings, with all of those things that are...
Speak into the mic so that people can hear you.
With all of those things that are happening. My ask is to understand if there is a way to have the Wilmington Arts Building removed from the list of repurposing and given back to the Arts Council when it becomes available again in the fall. My ask for that is because the town came to a number of us and asked us to help you build this council back, to help you get it back into the community and give those things back, and we're excited and we're encouraged to do that, but we need a place to do that, we need a center that we can offer the community to come and participate in things. When my daughter, and it was a long time ago, but when my daughter was, you know, in elementary school, they used to do art shows there, and the kids would come home with their little notice and they'd say, "My art is hanging in the arts center, I want to go and see if I got a ribbon," and there's no place for that anymore. And I understand why the building was repurposed for a short period of time, it made sense at the time, it did. I know people weren't excited about it if they were part of that council, but it did make sense for the purposes that you needed it. but it did make sense for the purposes that you needed it for. You don't need it anymore. It's emptying out, and it seems like giving it back to its original owners would be the appropriate thing to do. But I don't know the appropriate channels for doing that, and I don't know if that's possible at this point where it's already been put on a list of places. And it just... We don't have the energy to fight 20 other groups to ask for the senior center, which would be ideal. We could make that into an amazing culture and community center for Wilmington. But we need to start someplace.
Yeah, well, thank you. Thank you for your question, and certainly I know the town manager's already made note of it, and we'll certainly have him look into it and circle back with you.
I appreciate that. Thank you.
Try to get you the best answer possible.
Okay.
All right. Thank you. Anyone else like to be heard? Sir, good evening.
Mr. Chairman, would you like to see if somebody else would like to speak before me? I'd be willing to defer to them if anybody else would like to speak.
Very kind of you, sir. Would anyone else like to be heard?
Okay, thank you, because usually you interrupt me to see if other people want to speak, so that's good. So I've gone to most all of the Finance Committee meetings, and after going to the most recent one, some things on the agenda were pretty concerning to me. The most recent Finance Committee, when they were taking the vote, Mr. Neville drilled down into the budget of the Shawshank Tech, and some of the language that they used amongst themselves was that the school superintendent was misrepresenting numbers, and they had a serious concern about the budget for the Shawshank Tech. Some of the people spoke tonight about the MBTA article, and just some numbers that I have. To educate a student going to Wilmington Public Schools, it's about $18,000 per year per student. The Shawshank Tech, it's about $32,000 per year. And one of the other things that they were mentioning is that there doesn't seem to be an end in sight to the escalation for the Shawshank Tech. So that was kind of concerning. With regard to one of the other articles at the Finance Committee hearing was the Title V Septic article, and there was an amount of $200,000 slated for upgrades to the Title V Septic program. But now we find that there's only $7,000 in that account, so there appears to be a $193,000 deficiency. So I would like, Mr. Manager, if you could just let us know what's going on with that. Are people not paying back those loans? Where's that money disappearing to? And how come there's no more filling of that fund so that other people that have deficient or problematic septic systems can actually tap into that money? Seeing as though we have about $40 million of free cash in the account, and that money in that account is from over-budgeting. I do want to thank the board for recognizing Motorcycle Safety Week, and I did want to mention about a friend of mine who had a promising hockey career, but his hockey career was cut short because being on a motorcycle going around a bend, the motorcycle was taken out from under him because he slid on some leaves. And whether it's sliding on leaves or loose gravel or sand or potholes, there needs to be a little bit more than just proclaiming motorcycle safety awareness. There actually needs to be a very aggressive plan to fill in potholes and fill them in really quickly, like within 24 hours. And an aggressive plan to actually sweep this, especially the bends in the road, so that something like that doesn't happen again. With regard to the proposed school, I still stand opposed to it. Knocking down a school that people tell me that is one of the best schools in town, the North Intermediate, which has had millions of dollars put into it, to knock that down and to build a $250 million school, it seems like a real oppressive agenda to put an onus on people that are already at their wits' end for taxes. And I don't know if you realize this, but people actually got up and said that the town's taxes, individual taxes, were only going to go up the cost of a cup of coffee a day when they built the high school. And people, if they were honest, will realize that their taxes doubled. The cost of the new high school is about $85 million, and they're basically looking for a triple that amount of money to knock down a good school, a structurally sound school with millions of dollars put into it, to build a school that's three times as much as the high school. And I got up at the past meeting, and I said, "Listen, buildings don't educate students. It's good quality teachers that educate students, and we should be recruiting..." I don't care if it's poaching them from other towns, but recruiting teachers and paying them salaries so that they want to come to this town and want to stay in this town. And I think I would like to see this board actually be a little bit more proactive on that. We just heard tonight that we have an owner's project manager under contract for a design of this school. A fortune of the town's money is being wasted on all of these things, and you don't even have a vote yet. There's been no vote taken to see if the town even wants to have an override of the taxes to fund a $250 million school, so you continue to waste money. I was recently at a meeting where they talked about the fire substation, and looking through their deeds and looking at the registry of deeds at various paperwork, I see that that piece of land was slated to be a fire substation, and for years, the people were having articles come before them to approve an article for feasibility study here, a feasibility study there, and it just seems like it was a waste of money, and it just doesn't seem like the responsible thing to do, but...
Okay, thank you, Mr. McDonald.
The most concerning thing, Mr. Bendel, this is kind of important, Mr. Bendel, since I think there's a title problem. I believe there's a title problem.
Thank you for that.
The Chowt Sims Hospital, which conveyed the property, filed for bankruptcy, and when I was going through the deeds, there appears to be a title problem, and I would just encourage the manager to check that out. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else like to be heard? We'll move on to announcements. Any board members have announcements? Mr. West?
Chair, first of all, I'd like to say that we... The Hound and Tavern and Town Museum had their open house, and part of that open house was a Wilmington Minutemen installation of offices. Being one of the members of the Minutemen, I want to thank the members of the board that were able to come to the celebration, so thank you very much on that.
For having us. Any other announcements? I just wanted to announce briefly that this Friday, there is a fundraiser at the Knights of Columbus. Kicks off at 7:00. It's the Local Heroes in conjunction with a couple Eagle Scouts that are putting on a comedy show. Tickets are going to be sold at the door. Also, you can reach out to the Veterans Office, who's helping assist getting the word out about tickets, so it should be a great time come Friday night. Starts at 7:00, the comedy show, to support a great cause. Also want to give a shout out Wilmington resident who actually has been mentioned here quite a few times, but Kylie Ducham is a senior who led the Bentley University Women's Team to the Elite Eight today. Unfortunately, they did fall short in the Elite Eight, but Kylie was the leading scorer in the game down in Pittsburgh and really made us proud. She was a 1,000-point scorer at Wilmington High School, outstanding athlete, longtime resident family. Been in town for a long time, so been really enjoyed following her success and wish her continued success. And obviously, I know it's probably a tough day for her after that loss, but we're really proud of her and her teammates. Great run by Bentley. Any other announcements?
Mr. Chairman, the only thing I do want to say real quick is that I know Mr. Fasulo did single out Lil and I on speaking out against the MBTA, but I agree, you spoke earlier that we've all spoken out against the MBTA, so some maybe louder than some, some quieter than others, but, you know, we've all done our due diligence and gave our opinion, and as a board, you know, we voted against it. So I just, again, want to, you know, echo your comments that the board did vote, and we still outlook at our options, and some of those options are, what can we do to minimize or go against this proposal?
Thank you for saying that. Yeah, it's a tough one, you know. It's... People feel, as I said, passionate both ways, so... Okay, new business. I'll stop. Mrs. Slagle has some.
Yes.
Thank you.
We had a late-breaking request that came in. Unfortunately, it's a request for use of the town parking lot for an event that will happen before our next meeting, so we need to take it up under new business if the board is willing. So this would be a board-to-consider request from the Wilmington Sons and Daughters of Italy to run their annual diaper drive for Paula's Angels on Saturday and Sunday, April 12th and 13th, 2025, from 8:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. at the municipal lot by the 4th July Building. There's some more information on the event, including the fact that the Easter Bunny is going to come, so we can't let that slip by.
It's a big deal.
And so rather than have them have to miss this date because we won't meet again, I wanted to put it on as new business.
Yeah, thank you for that. And sorry to interrupt you. This has been... Again, I deem this to be appropriate as it came in within less than 48 hours anticipated. Mr. Carr, you just hit a big milestone, so you want to share that with us?
Yes, well, Mr. Chairman, the chairman of the event is here, Janet Ingram, and she may be able to tell you that milestone event that was hit last year.
Need no introduction, but Miss Ingram, please.
Janet Ingram, Allen Park Drive. I am really proud to be here representing Paula's Angels. As you know, if you don't know, Paula Starker started a program keeping babies' diapers... Keeping Babies' Bottoms Dry, One Diaper at a Time. And it was something that just touched my heart that as a mother, I can't imagine not being able to provide a diaper for my child. And then there's needless to say, having a baby with not a diaper is just overwhelming. Paula has recently retired, and there's a group of Wilmington citizens that have come together, and we're naming ourselves Paula's Angels to carry on Paula's mission. And thankfully, every year, the Wilmington Sons and Daughters of Italy come together with us, and we collect diapers. We have the Easter Bunny for the little ones. As of last year, we've been able to donate over a million diapers.
Wow, that's amazing.
So our hopes is that, you know, you all will allow us to continue that by granting us permission to use the parking lot and make a lot of little ones happy seeing the Easter Bunny, but more importantly, continuing to keep babies' bottoms dry, one diaper at a time.
Well, thank you very much. I'd been to the event before and got a chance to meet the Easter Bunny, which was awesome, and... But what you're doing is even better, so I really appreciate that. I think it's definitely worth us taking up. Would anybody like to offer a motion to two dates once more time?
Yes, that would be April 12th and 13th, 2025, from 8:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m.
We have no conflicts that we're aware of.
No, we've already checked for conflicts. No conflicts.
Great, and so is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Thank you, Ms. Maselli, seconded by Mr. De Palma. Thank you. Further discussion, other than our... You know, thank you very much. Really appreciate you doing this.
Thank you.
This is terrific, and I hope for great weather on those dates.
We do, too.
On all the dates, you know, whatever we can do. Okay, all those in favor? It's unanimously approved. Thank you so much. Thanks for bringing it through. All right, any other board members have new business? Okay, hearing none. Yes, sir.
I was wondering, in reference to the MBTA 3A, I know that, you know, we were told that, you know, the various legislations are putting various amendments forward, and where the town voted no, I think, would it be possible to write a letter to our state legislative delegation to remind them that the town... Their constituents voted no as a town in the town of Wilmington, so that would be both Senator Feingold and Representative Roberts.
That's fine with me. If anybody has any objection, if not, we can see if we can get something drafted up and at the next meeting, we can sign off on it.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any other board members have new business? Hearing none, we'll move to important dates, sir.
I have some new businesses.
Excuse me, sir.
It doesn't say specifically for board. It just says new business.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
So I just got a question for the manager.
I'm sorry, that's out of order, sir.
Other than their new business?
New important dates. Thank you very much.
Can you explain to the people of Wilmington what...
Sir, if you don't mind, we have very important dates coming up, and we want to make sure everybody can hear them. Thank you.
I'm sure you do.
March 29th, there's a rabies clinic at Tewksbury Senior Center, 175 Chandler Street, from 10:00 a.m. to 12:00 noon. A reminder, April 1st, the amended town hall hours are in effect, so that means Monday, Wednesday, and Thursday from 8:30 to 4:30 p.m., Tuesday from 8:30 to 7:00 p.m., and Friday from 8:00 a.m. to 12:30 p.m. We have several brush drop-off dates at Old Main Street. April 2nd from 8:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m., April 5th from 9:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m., April 9th from 8:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m., April 12th from 9:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. Then on April 14th, we have our next select board meeting here in Town Hall, Room 9, 7 o'clock p.m. April 14th through the 18th, we're having a curbside collection of Leaves and Grass. Importantly, April 16th is the last day to register to vote in the annual town election and to sign up for the annual town meeting, so the Clerk's Office will be open until 5 o'clock p.m. on that day, April 16th. Again, we have some more brush drop-off dates at Old Main Street. April 16th from 8:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. April 19th is the Little League Opening Day Parade. Brush drop-off on the 19th will be from 9:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. April 21st, the town offices will be closed for Patriots' Day. April 23rd, we'll have brush drop-off at Old Main Street, 8:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m., and then April 26th, brush drop-off from 9:00 to 4:00. On April 26th, we do have the annual town election. There are multiple contested races, so we hope folks will come out. The polls open at 8 o'clock a.m. to 8 o'clock p.m. Importantly, I actually think a more important thing that's happening that date is we're having the Welcome Home on April 26th for Marine Corporal John E. Edwinson, Jr. He was killed in Guata Canal in September 24th, 1942, and his remains have recently been identified, and they're bringing... Brought back to Wilmington. And so on that date, the 26th, there will be a service at noon at Nichols Funeral Home, and then he'll be laid to rest in his family plot in Wilmington Cemetery. On April 28th, we have the next select board meeting, Town Hall, Room 9, at 7 o'clock p.m., and then April 28th through 29th, the curbside collection of Leaves. Brush drop-off, 8:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. on the 30th. On May 3rd, brush drop-off, 9:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. Both of those are at Old Main Street. And then May 3rd, we have annual town meeting at the high school auditorium from 9:00 a.m. until it ends. Special town meeting, also at the high school auditorium at 9:00 a.m. As was discussed earlier, we anticipate that MBTA zoning article will be on that special town meeting at 9:00 a.m. May 7th, there's a brush drop-off at Old Main Street from 8:00 to 2:00. May 10th, a brush drop-off at Old Main Street from 9:00 to 4:00. And then finally, May 12th through 16th, curbside collection of Leaves and Grass.
Thank you, Mr. Slagle, and finally, as tradition, tonight, we will salute a veteran. On behalf of the board, it's my honor to salute this evening, Mr. Frank M. Puello for his service to our country as a corporal in the United States Marine Corps, earning the Navy Occupation Service Medal and the Good Conduct Medal for his service in our country, and we appreciate his service to our country and our community, and tonight, we salute him and thank him for his service. And with that, we'll be looking for a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. All those in favor? It is unanimous. Good night, everyone, and thank you for being here.
Good night.